It's time now for the Casey Ingram Show on WSTU. The opinions expressed are those of the program hosts and guests and not necessarily those of WSTU. WSTU does not endorse products that may be mentioned. Any reproduction or retransmission of this broadcast is strictly prohibited without written consent of WSTU. It's time to call in with your questions and comments at 220-978-8220, WSTU. And now here's Casey Ingram.
Welcome back, folks. Good morning. Now, we're making it through all the thunderstorms and rain here from Hurricane Debbie, but I hope you're all doing well. Today, we're going to have on tap Commissioner Ed Campy as we continue our Meet Your Candidate series. If you're normally tuning in and listening to Mark Breckbill, I want to thank Mark Breckbill for sponsoring this hour. He has allowed me to take his time, so we all have the opportunity to really get to ask in-depth questions and meet the candidates. My first guest is going to be Commissioner Ed Campy. He was delayed with an important meeting this morning, but he's just a couple minutes out, so he'll be here in just a couple minutes. So I'm just going to go over a few things with you while we're waiting for Commissioner Campy to make it over here to the studio. He's, like I said, just a couple minutes away. Thursday is the last day to request a mail-in ballot, so please make sure that you do that. If you're unable to make it to the polls or attend early voting, you do have until the end of the day Thursday. The election will be on August 20th. We are running down to the final days. This is very exciting. I'm looking at all the candidates, and of course, we're all seeing the signs. And I have to do a shout-out to whoever owns the property on the corner of Martin Downs and Map Road. It appears that they say, "If you have a sign, put it in my yard," because you certainly cannot tell who that they're supporting, because I think every candidate has a sign in that yard. It just makes me smile as I go by there. A super-representation of all the folks that are out there running for office this time around. And if you're in Martin County, our races will be decided August 20th. Do not wait for the general election; they'll already be decided. City commission races, Indian Town, the Village of Indian Town, Sewell's Point, as well, of course, our county commission races. Some of the races of the constitutional officers, which is like the supervisor of election, property appraiser, they've already been decided because there were no opponents. However, with our Martin County Commission, city of Stewart, Indian Town, and Sewell's Point, the council members or commission races are up. With Martin County, we're going to focus on that today because I have Commissioner Ed Campy in the first hour, Commissioner Doug Smith in the second hour at 10:00. Those are all Republicans that are registered, so important that you get out and vote. The one race, which is Commissioner Doug Smith's race, is a closed race, which means you have to be registered Republican to vote in it. All other races, everybody can vote in. We'll talk about that closed race with Commissioner Smith when he comes in here. But basically, what it is, is there's a writing candidate that has filed, and when that happens, it is legal. And it's a loophole that frustrates a lot of people, but it's perfectly legal to have somebody write in. It closes that District One commission race to Republicans only. So those are some really important dates. Again, August 20th. The precincts will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM that day. So, early voting is August 10th through 17th, and that is open 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM daily. You can go to martinvotes.gov. You can look up where your precinct is. You can make sure that you're registered. You needed to make sure you're registered by July 22nd. But all the information you could possibly need is at martinvotes.gov. If you have any questions, the office there is friendly and able to help you out, so you can also give the good folks at the Supervisor of Elections a call. And finally, on my way in today, you're starting to see the sign waving, and I passed a gal who was sign-waving out on Monterey Road, and a lot of energy. And just, you know, if you all can remember, everybody has their heart in these races, and everybody has decided to run for a specific purpose. And it's wonderful for voters and for residents to have a choice, and that's really what it's about. But be respectful of their signs that are out on the roads, and, you know, please don't take them down. They're just for the season, and it's just part of the process, and it's part of our democracy, and it's part of being here in America. So that's kind of the fun things about it. And as I said, Commissioner Campy was just a few minutes out, and you were quicker than I thought as he has dashed into the studio. So how are you doing today?
I'm doing very well. I apologize. I had you at 9:30, and I was doing a new member orientation in Palm City, trying to be in two places at once, so I apologize for being tardy.
I imagine that happens a lot during campaign season, that you just have a lot of things.
Yes, trying to be everywhere. Trying to be everywhere, but this is a great opportunity, so I'm glad to be here.
Well, my pleasure, and I'm excited to have you here because there's just so many different topics to cover. And just a little background, Commissioner Ed Campy was first elected in 2008 to 2012. You then, in 2012, ran for another race, which that you were not elected to, came back in 2016, won your seat back, and here you are today, going for the fourth term.
Correct. Last time, I had the honor and privilege of running unopposed, so I figured I would run again. There's still some projects and things to work on, some lead the county in the right direction. Hopefully, people agree with that, and I'll do one more election.
There's a lot of topics to cover, and I'm so glad that you're in here today. But because you have been here really since 2008, there's a lot of folks that have moved into the area since then. So let's go back like you're a new candidate. Tell us about Ed Campy. When you came to Martin County, what did you do before you were a commissioner?
Okay, thank you. As I said earlier, thanks for this opportunity.
My pleasure.
My name is Ed Campy. My wife and three children and I, we moved here permanently in 2003. My parents have been in Palm City since the early 90s, so I guess as their son, we would visit all the time. My parents have had, we as a family, have had a house in Florida since the 70s. We were originally in PGA National down in Palm Beach Gardens, literally since the late 70s. Born and raised in New York on Long Island, worked for the first 25 years of my career in New York City. Had always loved Florida, had like the pace of Florida in general, but then when my parents moved up to Palm City, we just fell in love with it, even as a young adult before kids. My wife and I have the, you know, really the blessing of being high school sweethearts. We met and started dating in high school, have never dated anyone else. So we would come down and visit my parents here in Palm City and in Martin County, and it was just so great. And then to go back and have the hustle and bustle of New York City, it really was quite an easy decision for us. And then I happened to be working in New York City on September 11th, 2001, watched all that happen, lost lots of friends that perished in the towers. It sort of changed, like, what are you looking for in your life? What are your priorities in your life? And because of that, my wife and I decided that, you know, at that point, we had Sarah, who's our oldest, who's currently, you know, 28-years-old. She was five at the time, and we had just had twins. Scoot in a little closer. We had just had twins in the spring of 2001. So now with a young family, we were deciding, where will we live? Where will we raise them? And we found, obviously, Palm City, and we moved down. And really, to be honest, my wife was concerned about where we would have the kids go to school, and even in New York, we had heard remarkable things about this wonderful elementary school, Palm City Elementary School. And so we actually found the elementary school first, and then found a home second, so that we could send our kids there. And I'll tell you, it was one of the best decisions we've ever made. All three of my kids have gone through elementary, middle, and high school here in Martin County, have done remarkably well. And, you know, a lot of people say, you know, "Wow, your kids are so smart. What did you and your wife do?" And obviously, we'll take some of the credit, but a lot of it goes to the remarkable educators and administrators that Martin County School Districts have. So that was a tremendous blessing. And then all the other things, the environmental, the water, the lifestyle, how friendly the community was. So we came down, and I, my goal had been for a long time to open up an ice cream and chocolate store, believe it or not. My wife had worked in a chocolate store up in New York, and I had run a fleet of good-humor ice cream trucks when I was in college. And it's such a happy, friendly business.
Right.
That I decided that that's what we were going to do here. And a couple of years later, we opened our first store in Palm City, in a brand-new public shopping center. And the reason I tell you this is this was my segue, this was my introduction to politics, is it was a very difficult process to navigate through, even just for a single store, through the process at that time with the county, growth management, the building department, the inspections. It was just much more difficult than we thought it needed to be. And so after we opened the store in 2005 to gangbusters, it was just as good as it could be. Everyone loved it. It was very successful. But then, of course, the recession came, and it beat up a lot of people. And then some folks reached out to me and said, "Hey, you know, would you be interested in possibly running for office?" At the time, I was very involved with my church, Holy Redeemer Church in Palm City, and the kids' school, because I always wanted to do that, be engaged in their school. And then some other, you know, community organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, that people said, you know, the person who was in the seat before me, Mike Dieterlizzi, was running for something else, so the seat was open. And this is in 2007. So I'm thinking, "I don't need to. I'm trying to open up a whole chain of ice cream and chocolate stores." But I thought about it, that if I, as a small-business owner and having a business background in much larger businesses, maybe I am the right person to do it. And, you know, so I came in with that. I ran, it was the 2008 election, so Barack Obama was running for president, and in the primary, it was like, back then, it was like an official election. There was four of us in the primary, running as Republicans, and then there was one woman running as a Democrat and one gentleman running as a no-party affiliate. So it was the full campaign. And obviously, I had won, and, you know, spent four years doing that. But of course, the recession came, and so we really spent most of that time trying to weather the recession, right the ship, if you will, and I think we did a pretty good job of that. I did really not expect to run again for any elected office, but a lot of folks had encouraged me to run for clerk, because Marcia Ewing was retiring after decades. And so I thought, "Well, it would allow me to stay involved in the community, but also, you know, you're raising a young family." At that point, in 2012, my oldest daughter, Sarah, was getting ready to, you know, graduate high school in a couple of years. So our lifestyle was changing. The responsibilities of paying for college tuitions and things like that were coming our way. So, you know, I say it's a blessing. Believe it or not, most politicians wouldn't tell you that losing an election would be a blessing. But for me, it was. One, we are all very fortunate to have Carolyn Timmons be our clerk. She was a dear friend beforehand, and we're still dear friends, so I'm so happy that it was her. And then it also opened up a whole new world of possibilities for me. I took a job with a friend of mine that owned a company in Palm City. We manufacture industrial pressure and temperature gauges. And what I've been able to do, I started the day I left the commission. So if I left on a Tuesday, I started the next day, and I'm still with him. I have traveled all over the country and all over the world for this company. Small company, but we sell our products globally.
Okay.
And I'm the one. So I need two, four more states, and I've been in every state. And I need Antarctica, and I will have been on every continent. I've been in China, I've been Australia, I've been to Dubai, South Africa, Israel, all over Europe. And I'll tell you, I never really expected to come back to the commission, but as you well know, during the four years that I was out of office, from 2012 to 2016, three of the five commissioners were arrested. There was a philosophy of, "We're going to stop all growth and all development." And I still hear that today, but what people don't realize is that people have property rights, and the folks that have the financial wherewithal are not going to be told, you know, by a local government what they can and cannot do, if they're legally entitled to do it. And at the time, the commission majority didn't see that as really a thing, and you know what happens?
Yes.
They were sued at some point, you know, probably over, the county was on the hook for nearly $100 million. And people started to reach out to me and say, "Would you run again? Would you run again? We need you to come back." And I really didn't have an anticipation to come back, but I did. And I ran against the incumbent who replaced me.
Right.
And then actually, an older incumbent, a woman that had been the commissioner from 1996 to 2000. So it was an interesting race of three, at one point or another, sitting commissioners.
Right.
And I was very blessed to win. John Haddix did an excellent job in his four years there, but we, he and I just had a different philosophy. And he's a great guy, and I appreciate his service. But I came back in, and we started to make some changes, and so that was 2016 to 2020. And then, of course, the pandemic came. And then, like I said earlier, I ran, I had the blessing of running unopposed, and so we worked through the pandemic. And I'll tell you, you know, it was new for everybody.
Oh, for sure.
And I know there's some frustration with folks still with me, that we had made certain decisions at the time, but in hindsight, it's easier to look back and say, "Well, I don't know if I would have done that, or maybe you shouldn't have done this." But at the time, we were just taking the information in real time and trying to make legitimate decisions and work our way through a very difficult process. And so I don't really apologize for it. There's things that, yes, we could have done differently, but at the time, really trying to be thoughtful in those decisions. And then now, I just figured I would run one more time. Now, I have two opponents, as you know. I've watched you interview them, and you've done an excellent job with that.
Thank you.
I have always tried to run a very legitimate campaign, respectful of my opponents, understanding that they're putting themselves out just as much as I am. And I feel, for the most part, we, the three of us, have run a very respectful-of-each-other campaign. Some, it's easier than others, and so it's, we've kept it to the topics that are appropriate.
So there's a lot to cover in what you just touched on. You just said that you, this is the last time you're going to run. You just said it here.
Yes.
On air, it's recorded.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. You know, some people said, "Don't say that. It makes you a lame duck before you even hopefully win again." And I don't feel that way. I feel that I will run, I will race through the finish line, given the opportunity, which I'm hopeful to have, for one more term. I don't want to make it a lifetime career. I have a lot of other things that I'm looking to do in my life, and so I'll set my own personal term limit.
Term limit there.
And because of that, I don't, I don't have any regrets. And you said, "Hey, you said it here on air."
Right.
I said, as a joke to Vicky Davis when I filed my paperwork, I said, "When the future, if the future Ed Campy tries to come in three and a half years from now, lock the door."
There we go. You heard it here, folks. You heard it here.
The current Ed Campy, the present Ed Campy is speaking to the future Ed Campy. And let someone else have a turn. This particular time, I just felt that I'm still, obviously, I feel that I'm still the right person to continue to represent District Five.
So we're going to ask a couple of things. First of all, Commissioner Campy, his opponents are Bruce, Nathan, and Michael Circus. This is District Five. But again, folks, everybody in the county votes for every commissioner, so it doesn't really matter the district number.
As well as everyone that's registered in any party can also run. I can also vote in the District Five.
That is absolutely correct. The District One race is closed because there was a writing candidate, so only Republicans can vote in that race, and that's Commissioner Smith and Eileen Vargas' race.
Correct.
So you are running for this last term. What was it that you said, "I need to complete yet"? What hasn't Commissioner Campy done on the dais that he said, "I just want one more term to complete"?
To be perfectly frank with you, it's twofold, and it's, there are certain projects that take a while to complete. You know, I use an expression, and our county staff is second to none. They really are remarkable, but there's five commissioners. It's a big county. There's lots of projects, and everyone has their priorities, the other commissioners, the community, on what they're hearing and what they think, as well as the things that are just thrown our way, that we have no choice but to handle. You get a year of terrible discharges, and we're dealing with blue-green algae and all of these other issues. You get a hurricane, and all of a sudden, all of the, you know, your traditional plans are out the window. So the first part is, is I'd like to continue to work on some projects and some things throughout the entire county with my fellow commissioners and the staff. And then, you know, with all due respect to my two opponents, if one of them had aligned, if I had felt really aligned with one of them, their background, their capabilities, their abilities, their philosophy, their preparation for the position, I might have said, "Look, it's time for a new person to take this opportunity." And, you know, with all due respect to them, I said it again, I didn't think the two gentlemen that I'm running against at this particular point in time would have done a better job than I would be able to do for the Martin County residents.
You mentioned the county staff and how helpful they are, and I have to do a shout-out for them as well. I bug them about different topics, and they're very responsive, and I appreciate all the information that they give me. But one question I ask all the candidates that come through this door is, and we kind of get an idea because you've been sitting on the dais, when projects come before you and items for you to vote, are you just taking staff recommendation? What does Ed Campy do when those projects come in front of him? Is there more to it than just saying, "These people are paid to give us recommendation. Let's just take their recommendation," or is there more to it?
That is a fantastic question. If you were only going to ask me one question during this whole interview, that's the right question. I have watched everything you've done. I've watched every interview from start to finish with every candidate, not just my own, my own opponents, every candidate. And you are asking the right questions. And I watched, I actually follow you on your YouTube.
Thank you.
And so I watch you, I watch the re, you know, the redos on YouTube. And one of, and I'm a taking-the-high-road kind of a guy. One of my opponents, when answering questions that you were asking, I felt either did not completely understand the full scope of what it was. So to answer your question, no, of course, I don't exclusively take the suggestions or the recommendations of staff. So much happens behind the scenes that, you know, the commissioners, because of the Sunshine Law, we're not allowed to speak to each other outside of the meeting. Most people don't know that.
It's tough.
And they're like, "You folks look like you're hearing each other's opinions for the first time ever." Yes, we are, but we absolutely hear from staff, and they hear from us. Now, what staff is not allowed to do is tell us my fellow commissioners' opinions. "Hey, you know, Commissioner One would vote no, and you're thinking yes." That's called telegraphing. It's not allowed. It's illegal. So I have to have my own one-on-ones with staff, and, look, I've been around long enough. My career and background and experience, my life experience, allows me to have a pretty good concept of what is appropriate, legally appropriate. But we have a legal staff, we have an engineering staff, we have growth management, and all of our other professionals that give us advice. And then, many times, I've pushed back on suggestions that they've made and said, "I disagree." Now, I'm not an expert or a professional with certifications and degrees in every topic, but we have them in every topic. We have engineers, we have growth management, we have building department, we have environmental. So I believe that we do have a staff that we can rely on, that our citizens can rely on. So there are certain things, like with Ms. Sarah Woods, our attorney, or anyone else that works in her office. I'm not an attorney, so I really give a lot of credence to the advice that they're giving us. Now, an opinion is an opinion, and everybody's allowed to have that. But if someone's giving me professional, decades-of-experience legal advice, engineering advice, environmental advice, growth management advice, I obviously take that into consideration. Then at the meeting, when you get to hear from other commissioners, I'll give you a perfect example. Yesterday, we were hearing from our growth management staff about the EER, the Evaluation Report that's due every seven years. There's a process that has to review all of the chapters of the comprehensive plan. And so then it has to go to the LPA, the Local Planning Agency, and that takes time. And then it has to come to us. But there's also state statutes and laws on when it needs to be sent back up to Tallahassee and how you have to send it. So staff had made the suggestion that the county commission, our board, would review all 19 chapters in one meeting.
Oh, my.
And Commissioner Hurd.
This is an enormous document, folks.
Yeah. Commissioner Hurd said, "I don't think that that's a great idea." Now, I've never had the chance to hear her opinion. I have heard from staff, and they laid it out in such a way that I thought it made sense. But when I hear one of my colleagues say, "Wait a second, I was thinking, as she was speaking, the public won't be able to absorb that much information. It'll be too much for the staff to have to prepare, to present all of it, one after the other. It's too much for any commission to listen to." So I agreed with Commissioner Hurd, and we, now, there's enough of us to tell staff, "This is what we want." So the answer to your question is, no. I would look at suggestions of staff's recommendations on certain very specific items. Yes, their recommendation, after constant review of multiple departments, I'm not necessarily going to overrule them. I have, but they're there for a specific reason. We're not rubber stamps. Anyone that's watched any of the meetings realize, there's no rubber stamps up there. And staff is sometimes very frustrated with us, because there's five of us.
Right.
So three, two or three will send them in one direction, two or three will send them in another. So it's a very important process, but at the end of the day, if the commissioners didn't make the final decision, you wouldn't need commissioners.
Last fall, the commission agreed to pay $4 million for a six-acre parcel of land in Palm City that was earmarked for 90 apartments. The developer nearly doubled their initial $2.1 million purchase, and the concern for some residents was a bad precedent was being set. It seemed it was mainly nearby residents that were upset. Can you give us insight why you urged your fellow commissioners to purchase this land from the developer?
It's my pleasure to. It's a question that I've been waiting for.
We had a whole show about this back in January, folks, so don't take that long, Ed.
And I'm really happy to, because that's what I'm so pleased, and it sounds like I'm gushing for you. There are so few legitimate mediums for, not just candidates, for people involved in a multitude of areas to get a chance to speak to our public. Sadly, as the Stewart news starts to fade, all local printed media nationwide is fading for what you have done and friends and neighbors and others. Because, look, I know you're a human being, you have your favorites and your choices, and you're entitled. But I don't see you, and I think I know who some of them are, obviously, but you don't bring it here, and I really appreciate that. So for the opportunity to explain why I did that in a fair forum, I really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Residents had reached, that parcel on Martin Highway, just west of Palm City School Avenue, had been an open parcel for a long, long time. I had been looking at it for quite a while as a commissioner, you know, many years ago, on what could we do with it, because the goal was to keep it from being developed at all. And at the time, I reached out to the owner of, who owned it then, and his representatives, and their number was actually 2.1 million. And for us to turn it into a park, or a dog park, or something like that, it didn't make financial sense to use taxpayer dollars to make it a green, open space. And we were not able to put a deal together. And then it just got quiet. And then I started hearing from residents, because remember, when projects, especially projects that are going to be legally permissible, which that lot was, it doesn't come to the commission. I don't know everything that's happening on every piece of property in the county. Some people can make an application to staff, and it goes through a process for up to or longer than a year before it'll blip on my radar screen. Now, I live in Palm City, but that had started to gain traction prior to me hearing about it. But the residents, there was going to be a, since it was in the CRA, they were going to have an NAC meeting, and my email started blowing up, and my phone started blowing up with people in the community saying, "You know, why would you approve this? What are you doing?" So I went to that NAC meeting. At the time, it was held in our chambers, because where they normally meet was under construction. This is a group of volunteers that sit up there as members of the community and listen to projects. It's the first in the multiple steps of how something would get to the commission to be approved. So I went, and I sat in the audience with a packed room of residents, not just from the neighborhood across the street or behind it, from all over Palm City. Most people won't know these neighborhoods, but if you're from Palm City, it was 15 different neighborhoods, because it would have affected everyone. And for the folks that are not familiar, it was going to be three three-story buildings with 30 apartments in each building, packed onto a relatively small site. You said six acres, which is true, but nearly two acres of that is unusable. So it's 90 apartments on four acres. And since it is the CRA situation, it would have been put right up on the sidewalk. Imagine a nearly 35-foot building on the sidewalk on Martin Highway, directly next to the entrance and exit to Palm City Elementary School, where hundreds and hundreds of kids walk and ride their bikes to school. We would have had two. We would have had two large buildings on Martin Highway and then another one around the corner. 90 apartments, one, two, and three stories, excuse me, one, two, and three bedroom, 123 parking spaces, the legal minimum.
Okay.
But it was acceptable minimum.
Right.
We all know that 90 apartments, some of them three-bedroom, 123 parking spaces is not going to work.
Right, right.
So to tighten the story up, it started to work its way through the process. Now, as a, as a candidate, candidates can say whatever they want about any project. They can't be sued for that unless they slander the project. But, you know, my opponents and any other opponents or, you know, challengers to an incumbent can say, you know, I hate that project. That's a terrible project. Well, as a sitting commissioner, I have a responsibility to be fair to an applicant who's running through a process that they paid thousands of dollars to do. It would not be appropriate for me to be like, that's terrible. So what do I do? How do I stop that from happening? Because it really was completely out of character. Now, I am for apartments, especially essential housing, because I've been talking about that for a long time. Some people said, well, you're a hypocrite. You're knocking down 90 apartments instead, but you're talking about apartments. Well, I'm not so blinded by the fact that we need additional housing for essential workers and, and senior citizens and veterans and, and everyone, that I would knock 90. But that doesn't mean that every project is appropriate. I call it the three Ps. And when you get onto, I'm sure, a question about rural lifestyle, that's where I came up with the three Ps. I need to know the project. What is it? I need to know the place. Where is it going to be? And quite often, I need to know the people.
Okay.
And I say the people, because sometimes people will promise something, and then once they get their approvals, they don't actually do what they say they're going to do. So someone's reputation and their moral character sometimes can help them or hurt them if they have a history in the county.
Okay.
So that might have been an excellent project in the wrong place. And so when you put the three pieces together for me, so now it's legally permissible. What that means to your listeners and viewers is they would legally be allowed to build that. If the commission voted no, we would be back into the 2012, 2016 era.
Talking about property rights again.
Where they would have sued us.
They had the right.
So, and I get that I'm a big believer in property rights. So I'm not allowed to reach out to them. So I speak to our legal staff. I'm not allowed to reach out to the owner, who was an out-of-town developer. And so our staff, they had to make a request. Now, listen, they sat in the front of that meeting, even at the NAC meeting, where people come, and I use the joking expression with pitchforks and torches, the people were angry, and rightfully so. I'm sitting there, I live in Palm City, I was angry about that project. It's not appropriate. It would set such an unbelievable precedent. There's nothing like that there. And some people say, well, you know, what difference does it make? And you're setting a precedent to stop a project. No, we were able to, with our staff and our legal staff, gave me excellent advice. And I use the advice that I've given other residents. When people would call the office and say, you know, I think they're going to build something next door to my house. And I said, well, do you own the property? Well, no, I don't. But I don't want that near me. I said, well, the only way you can control what's happening next to where you live is if you own it. So I basically followed my own advice and I went to staff and I said, is it possible that we could buy this property back? And it had happened once up in Jensen. There was a project many years ago that the county bought back and changed the whole look and feel of the project. I think that's a good thing. That, to me, shows your elected officials and your county government doing something to very creatively and legally changing the feel of what, it can't just be like, well, it's legal, so I guess we'll just have to do it. Shame on me if that was my philosophy, but was right at this minute, that project would be under construction. And people would have lost their minds that, how do you allow that to happen? So we didn't. And now I have no expectation or intention, as one of five commissioners, that we would keep the property. Now, in terms of 4 million and the guy doubling his price, he paid 2.1 million, as far as we could tell, as far as we could tell, he's probably sunk 500,000 architects, developers, engineers, going through the county process, all the consultants. And so now, we had it appraised. They put an offer out that they said, fine, we'll, we'll sell it back for $4 million. Remember, it was going to be 90 apartments. What's the value for them of 90 apartments? Now, even if they became the landlord, you'd have 90 apartments forever collecting rent. Or what most likely they would have done is finished out the project and sold it off to someone who does that. It's worth way more than 1.8 million dollars to them. So I was very pleased. Now, if it was more than $4 million, we would have it appraised. We had two legal appraisals. One came in at $4.5 million, one came in at $4.50 million. The county could use some of it because it's right along Danforth Creek. And so where the county's Public Works Department is purchasing a portion, about little less than two acres, for 800,000. And then the four acres that are left are very valuable. We're going to set some deed restrictions on it and then put it back out, not to say, this is what we want to be on that property. That's too narrow of a scope. We're going to say, what would you put here?
So the deed restrictions have not been set yet?
No, they're, they're, they're just about ready to come forward.
Okay, okay. So can you give us an idea of what you're thinking or not yet?
Yeah, well, because it's going to be a, it's going to go out on RFP.
Okay.
And I don't want, if someone happens to be listening, to have an unfair advantage of what they could potentially be. They're very flexible.
Okay.
It's, it's meant to protect the residents from something that would be really inappropriate for that area, but still open enough that we're not going to hamstring ourselves to good ideas.
Okay. I want to get into the urban service boundary. That's probably the largest topic this election cycle this time.
Most elections.
Right, most elections it is. Water can be also, but you're absolutely right. Everybody's very concerned about the urban service boundary. And you had mentioned setting a precedent here with the Palm City property. Of course, there was a rural lifestyle amendment that was passed, and that is also setting precedent. Initially, you had voted yes to transmit it for the state to review the rural lifestyle amendment. Then you had voted no on that particular project. So kind of walk us through, because there's, there's been another rendition of the rural lifestyle amendment for the Colusa Ranch project that enhanced it, extended it. So walk us through your thought process. And then I want to talk specifically about a couple of projects out there, because I will say that the rural lifestyle amendment, the idea of clustering, I personally, I've said it many times, I'm supportive of that clustering idea. The, the opponent said, but if you pass the rural lifestyle amendment for discovery, they're going to take an inch and then they'll, you'll give them an inch and they'll take a mile. And a year later, it was extended, the rural lifestyle amendment. So I'm giving you a lot here, but we're going to talk about a couple of projects that might... We've got just about 12 minutes left, I think.
I'll tighten it up for you. I voted no on the rural, now, I voted to transmit it because in my mind, there's a legal process and a fair process that applicants are allowed to have. And so to, how it works is someone comes through with an application and they want to go through, and then it's reviewed by our staff, and then it's reviewed by the commission to decide, should, is it worthy to us as a community to send it to Tallahassee to have a further review? I would not cheat or take that option, that right away from an applicant. Let it go up to Tallahassee. Let's hear what they have to say. Now, also in my mind, I was never a fan. I had shared that information with the applicants and the people that were proponents of it. Not my colleagues, because I'm not allowed to speak to them. And I didn't know at the time what their opinions were. But I don't mind letting the process play itself out to the point where it is then put before me to actually make, to give my personal opinion of yes or no. So I had shared many times with the applicant that I was not going to be supportive of the rural lifestyle. In my mind, back to the three Ps, I would prefer to know what is the project, where is it going to be, and who's bringing it forward. The rural lifestyle, and it had many iterations. It originally started out where it was thousands and thousands, tens of thousands of acres, and then it was narrowed down. The process was working. That's too big. They narrowed it down. And as far as I was concerned, they couldn't narrow it enough. Because I need to know, if I'm going to put my reputation and my vote on something, I really need to know specifically, what is it? And I get it. And I, and as the year has progressed, this last year, I hear all of the, quote, the benefits that as a planning tool, it offers. You have to also then try to get through the loud noise of, this is horrible, and this is terrific, and this is horrible. Elected officials have to do that. Now, you can get that advice from staff, from people you count on for their opinion in the community, and from the professionals that are paid. Yes, they're representing the applicant, but the information that they're giving is still valid. So I went all through that and I just was a no. And there was a lot of pressure to be a yes. And I just, I felt so strongly that I wanted to know specifically what the project, the project that was sort of spearheading it was Atlantic Fields.
Right.
Which I was a big fan of, because imagine, and we don't have enough time to share all of this, I'd love to come back.
I know, exactly. I mean, and I would too, there's so many things to discuss.
We could spend a topic, and what's nice is that even beyond a campaign, we're getting the opportunity to inform the residents. Now, they're not watching you or listening to you unless they want to be informed.
Right.
So I have no problem sharing that with them and you. So that being said, I voted no. It passed. And so now, when a project like the ranch, let me use two minutes of the ranch.
Okay.
It's nearly 4,000 acres off of Canor Highway on the way to Indian Town, for folks that don't know. It backs onto the canal. 4,000 acres, 3,900. Now, in the original rules, what we talked about earlier about legally permissible, back out there, you could build one house per 20 acres, a 20-acre ranchette. So they could have divided, spread out all over their nearly 4,000 acres, up to close to 200 homes, all over the property, every bit of environmental sensitive. Now, of course, they're going to have to still meet the rules, but they would have put them everywhere.
More utilities, more roads for emergency response.
The school bus has to drive through the whole thing, the mail truck, the fire truck, everything, driving all over the property. So they came forward and said, we want to build 175 homes. We want to cluster them, which many years ago was a terrible word. And, you know, it brings the services closer together. They want to have 91% open space. Now, some people will argue, well, a golf course is not open space. Yes, it is. Because let's say you have a 250-acre golf course. Now, I know this, my dad is 88 years old, but he's been a professional golfer my entire life. So I grew up in golf courses. My dad worked at a golf course. We weren't members, he worked there. 250-acre golf course, you have the tee where they hit the first shot, then you have the fairway, which is maintained, and then you have the green and potentially some sand traps. The rest, that could be 50 acres of actually maintained and managed space. The rest of it's trees and bushes and scrub. And then the rest of the property was going to be left alone. They also said, well, we're going to need water and sewer. In Palm City, we are trying as hard as we can to convert as many people close to the river, from Map Road east to the river, from Septic to Sewer. It's a $10,000 to $12,000 bill that they can stretch out over 20 years. These are not wealthy people. And then they'll have to pay for the connection. So how do I, with a straight face, tell my neighbors in Palm City, who $10,000 is a lot of money? And then another 1,500 to connect is a lot of money for them? They have to. But out here, still environmentally sensitive, still next to the canal, we're going to allow, because the old rule said you'd have to have a Septic system, we're multimillionaires, they're going to get a pass. I couldn't. They have to pay to bring those lines from where they end, closer to town. All of that's on them. They also donated three golf course holes to South Fork High School. They donated nearly a million dollars to Banner Lake. They donated 20 acres to IFIS, you were there.
Yes, I was.
They're on a postage stamp at the fairgrounds.
Yes, they are.
They're getting 20 acres to have the University of Florida extension. Really, all of that comes to allow these folks that approval. Rural lifestyle aside, I would have voted for that specific project based on the criteria that I just told you.
That's probably the question people ask most, and we are running down a time. I have so many more questions for you. But that's the question people ask most. Okay, why a comp plan amendment? Why not an individual approval for that project? You've done it before with New Field, which was Pineland Prairie.
But that was, that was also a comp plan amendment. It created a whole new thing. New Field was another project that will take many, many years to completely build out. That was a project that I supported. It's the first large-scale project, especially in Palm City.
I guess it covers more lands though than just the project. Let's, let's say it that way.
Right, but 4,000 acres, if, you know, New Field and, and the ranch are comparable.
Yes.
Think about this, I heard a statistic that Atlantic Fields, 317 homes. Apogee, no homes, golf courses, 175 homes for the ranch. On, so that's less than 500 homes on approximately 8,000 acres. And it will generate, now, I know people are like, well, you're just chasing tax dollars. Well, if we chase a tax dollar from a project like that, the rest of us won't necessarily have to pay that in our own taxes. That's six, it'll bring in potentially $60 million. It's less than 500 homes on nearly 8,000 acres. That's not explosive growth.
I'm going to break in real quick and change topics, because I like when residents ask you a question. Gary, do you support the Business Flares report on the innovation hub stretching across two CRAs in the industrial park?
I happen to know who that Gary is, and I appreciate how much he has dedicated to putting his time and energy into this process. The Business Flare is, it was a consultant that we brought in. I wasn't part of it. It's not in my district, but I'm, I'm involved in it. But I wasn't like, you know, personally involved in the creation. I was part of the agenda item to review it. Utilizing our opportunities at the airport and in that area, where a lot of our workforce, that specific type of workforce live, could walk there, which a lot of them do, could ride bikes there, which a lot of them do. And if they could live close to where they could potentially work, it's tamping down a lot of the traffic.
Right.
So I'm in favor of the concept and the process. Now, I have heard from involved residents that live and that are really part of that area, that there is a couple of things that they don't like. Well, I'm perfectly comfortable with allowing a process. I know that it's not in the CRA, but the Port Salerno CRA is really sort of supercharged and gotten themselves involved for a lot of reasons. But as far as I'm concerned, and I told our staff this, if you have a group of knowledgeable, educated, informed, interested citizens, we should absolutely hear their opinions. So Gary and the rest of the Port Salerno community, as far as I'm concerned, will have a seat at that table when we discuss the pros, the benefits, and, and potentially the shortcomings of that.
Fantastic, thank you. I want to mention to everybody that Jupiter Island sponsored a District III candidate forum that will be released imminently. It's going to be very, very soon, so stay tuned for that. And we're going to cover some of the same topics in depth about the urban service boundary, so you can get a little more information than what we can cover here on the show. But with that being said, there's a couple of projects that caught our eye and catches everybody's eye. One of them is Story. I don't know if you're able to talk about that right now, because it was a project that was, before it was Harmony Ranch, it was turned down by the county commission, they've sued the county. Right now, it's estimated that if they win their lawsuit, it would be over $100 million to taxpayers. But they've come back, the lawsuit's on hold, why they have submitted the Story project, which is 4,000 residential units, 825,000 square feet of non-residential uses, which results in 1.47 acres per unit. This is outside the urban service boundary. They, while they could apply under the rural lifestyle, they are not. This will be a comp plan amendment again for 1.47 units an acre. Is that a project that you can support?
I have to be very careful for two reasons. One, like I said earlier, as a sitting commissioner, my opinion, that I would say, especially in a forum such as this, could very well be replayed in a courtroom. Or I could be deposed on that. So that's first, for any project.
Right.
Secondly, they are actively suing us, because they were not happy with the results that they've gotten in the past. I think that's a very, very large project. And if you go back to my, the person, the project and the place, I will be using those three criteria to make that decision. And I mean, I would desperately like to blurt out my answer right now, but I have to be very cautious about that. That they're entitled to a process. That's all they're entitled to, is a process.
And absolutely right, I know legal staff with, there's a lawsuit out there, they tell you.
If Sarah Woods is listening, she would be jumping up and down in her office and I hope she was happy with the answer that I gave.
But let's talk about another project that is not being litigated. And it's a project, actually, I learned a lot from you because I went back and watched all the videos from 2020. It's the Waterside project. This was a project that back in 2010, there was agricultural land that was rezoned commercial and industrial because as you said.
Quite a bit.
And as you said, at that time, it was the Great Recession, we needed to really try and spur the economy. It worked great, it was on the waterfront. They rezoned part of this land for commercial and industrial, but nobody knew, the applicant nor the county, that the Army Corps of Engineer had a perpetual easement on the waterway, which made the project not viable.
Applicant should have known that.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out.
It's tucked in, I get it, but if that's your project and you're coming forward with the information, that probably should have known. That project's been, the whole area's been back and forth quite often. We're still trying to figure out the right strategy. Your question is?
Yes, my question is, because this is a big one. Waterside, which is, it was Coulter Group, purchased that property in 2020, we just have three minutes. The industrial commercial was flipped over to Cantor Highway, but there was a couple of caveats and, folks, again, we'll go into this deeper with that District Three forum, but the caveats were that they were not going to have a net loss of agricultural lands and also no residential uses would not be permitted on the land. Then in 2022, they broke ground on the industrial park, it's being built. They also purchased nearly another 100 acres that abuts the original property. And now they're coming in for 1,000 homes on 375 acres, which to me is 3.7 units an acre, but the county has it as 2.7 units per acre on agricultural land that's zoned for one units per 20 acre. This is a perfect project about what happens with land that is on our urban service boundary. So that's why I bring it up today, because that's under fire. It's a lot of pressure always on the commissioners.
I've had an opportunity to meet with the applicant. I have very clearly shared my very strong opinion with them. And what I would tell you today and your listeners is, an applicant is entitled to their process. They are allowed to bring forward any kind of a great idea they might think they have. And then it'll come through the staff and then it'll come to the commissioners where we will get the opportunity to speak, not on our own behalf, but on behalf of the residents. And all I'm saying is the applicant has the opportunity to make that application. That's all they're guaranteed, especially from me.
I appreciate that, it's a big one coming up.
You can sort of lead into that answer.
Yeah, exactly, folks, that's absolutely right. So I very much appreciate you coming in here today. I had so many more questions for you. And rather than going into those questions, we have about a minute left. So Ed Campi, running for Martin County Commission reelection for District Five. I wanted to talk about some of the projects you're most proud of. Okay, we're going to need you to come back.
Well, let me just say this, if you don't mind, if I can speak directly to your listeners. I've had the honor of representing not just Palm City, where my heart is, but all of Martin County residents through some tough times, a recession, a pandemic. I am ready to do it, to continue doing it. I have worked with our staff, I think of elections as job interviews. And you as residents are going to hire one of us. Yes, are going to hire one of us to represent you and have this job. I have the qualifications, the knowledge, the skill set to do it. And I would hope for your vote either early, starting this weekend or on August 20th. Ed Campi for Martin County Commissioner in District Five. Everyone gets to vote, no matter your party.
Thank you much, Commissioner Smith next.